Us in the county to meet at least quarterly, discuss items of mutual interest that would help all of us have a better county and a better city. You may have noticed I said Sandy, so this meeting is very informal and let's just, we don't need Chairman Quinn and Mayor Bezette and that type of thing. I'm Rex and he's Sandy and let's just sit back and talk and see if we can accomplish some things. What I'd like to do is give everybody, every commissioner, a chance to talk for a minute. We only have an hour, we're gonna try to limit it to an hour. That's the plan going forward, notwithstanding you guys have a meeting today that we need to get out of here and let y'all go to that. So anyway, what maybe we could do, Sandy, is just alternate back and forth. You know, one of you guys bring up topic or whatever, one of our guys just banner back and forth a little bit. So with that being said, I'll let Sandy say a few words, whatever he'd like to go.
Just like the mayor said, we set out and wanted to bring us both counties and cities together, so we kind of see how can we work together to make the county a better place for not only for us but for our constituents and for the citizens, for the people that's coming in and out. So we're here to see what can we do, what can we do, and vice versa, what can you guys do to see how can you guys help us out. And that being said, we're glad y'all have a little person there.
Well, you guys are our guests today, so I'll defer you. Anybody?
David, you got anything?
I don't have time to even say any.
Mr. McCollum?
Go ahead, Sandy. Start it off.
Okay. Um, well, I guess we just want to see where you guys are on a couple of things. And I'm pretty sure you guys probably got some questions for us. But Mayor, one thing I found out, and I noticed that this is an issue going on between the county and city about density, and I know we had a discussion, you, Mike, and Jim Anderson, sat out and we discussed the reference to the density issue on the public works, behind the public works site. And I don't even, I guess take it back to the board, or just take it back to the board. And so we just wanted to see what the board decided to do in reference to those acres located behind the public works.
What many of you guys can chime in when you want. But what we did, we, of course, went through the requirements of the state to annex the property. We annexed the property. And then with our land planner, Mr. Greer, we had, if you do a large-scale plan amendment, you gotta send it to D E O to get their approval for any zoning change. And what we sent to them was, Jim, correct me, or don't correct me, just bring me up on, remind me of what that was.
Yes, sir.
One part of it was R1, I believe, and one part was R3.
Correct.
And what were the acreage on both of those?
I believe the largest portion of it is R1, the portion that actually abuts to the actual ditch line that goes through there, because most of that is a treat area. There is a portion that is a sandy ridge on the back side. If you go to the, that would be on the railroad track side, basically about 25 acres. Uplands that has been classified or proposed to go to R3. And then the public works building city is public use, so it gets three to five acres.
So the R3 is 15 units per acre. The R1 is four.
Five.
Five per acre. And that's what we submitted to D E O. They've got to put their good housekeeping seal on it, and then that's what it is. Now, it can always be changed, but of course, we'd have to go back through the process from then.
And Rex, I think it's important, too, that we don't have any pre-concise portions of what we're going to do with it. What we'd like to do is make it, you know, least restrictive, starting out of the gate, to see what we can get, who can buy, what developers can we get interested in building housing for the workforce. So this gives us quite a bit of flexibility. You know, we're gonna name that back portion as R3 at one point, you know, maybe we do get an apartment complex back there. But for now, we're just housing guys. I mean, I'm not many work in the private sector, but it's tough. When your owners are in there cleaning rooms and folding laundry, and the employees are hard to find, federal unemployment's not helping us in. So this is just another part of the problem that we've got to solve, and housing's always been affordable or poorly, and most people, everyone has a different idea of what affordable is. And so we kind of want to leave it wide open. We'll show the two portions that we have available and see what they draw off there.
We understand, but I'm trying to think, I can't remember what we, is what you're saying is not what, did we discuss, I'm trying to say, did we discuss that? Because I thought we...
We discussed that, remember?
I thought we came up with a number.
No. We discussed it, and I remember I said, "I won't speak for my board, and I'm not in power hands to that." And so we, you discussed four per acre, I believe, that the county would like to see us pursue.
And I think we went up, if I'm not mistaken, but did we go up to, what did we go up to this day? Or we suffered?
Eighty-eight acres, I think.
I thought we were talking about going up and trying to have an issue.
That's not my record, that's what Sandy is all, so, but let's think about this a minute. If you're gonna have affordable housing, you gotta have increased density. That's all it is to it, or they can't build something that's affordable. And so even though we got the property and we have to basically give it to them, that's what St. Joe Company required us to do. And so that's what we'd have to do. So the dirt wouldn't be that important to them because it costs money, and still, I mean, it's just, it's just good business, since you gotta have, you gotta have a little higher density to build affordable housing. And so that's the way we are, really.
And I think part of the problem, too, we all proposed the four units per acre. We don't have anything in our L D R that allows for that, and we'd have to create a special code. And I think if you came to our board, you know, with the five units per acre, at least we have an R1 that fits that, and you don't have to carve out something special. So I guess really the, if y'all are okay with five, then the discussion early is what's left, and that's that R3 area that we talked about.
Right. What's the acreage here?
It's a smaller piece.
The total acres on it is 50, I don't have it right here in front of me, the total acreage is 58 acres on the parcel itself, but there's only a fraction of that that's actually believed would be buildable.
Okay, Sandy.
Probably 20 something acres.
20 something dollars per acre. Yes. So Sandy, let me ask you this. Is it an issue to you guys on any property we own? Is that what you're saying? Let's just say we decide we want to build it on the Field of Dreams property, which is our recreational property. You have a problem with density out there?
I think, Mayor, what really got the contention started is the property and how you wouldn't... I mean, that guy was shooting for, what, 40 an acre?
That's right.
You know, and I mean, to me, that was unreasonable. And I think that's really what started the ball rolling, as far as the fight between county and city. I mean, you're talking about, I mean, to me, I'm more, I would hope I'm more concerned with the local people than with the rest of them, you know? I mean, when you start to talk about 40 units an acre, you're devastating that with it.
Right, right.
And that was our concern. I think on how...
I see that.
And I think, you know, I think there's some compromise here, you know? I think we're willing to compromise on some density, on this property. But, you know, we just kind of look at the impact, I think, and we're looking at...
Yep. Well, on the R3, you said it's 25 acres, 15 units, that's 375 units per acre. I didn't do the math, but you did, I see.
And we all see every day, I do too, that, I mean, what, they got four people running burking down here, nine fours, and I mean, let's be honest, as long as the government's planning people to stay at home, they're not gonna work. And everybody I talk to is having a hard time finding help.
But where you go.
And, but to go back and work 4,000, what are we classifying as affordable, we're 4,000?
It's defined in the requirements that we got from St. Joe Company, and it's, it goes along state guidelines, so, and I don't know what those numbers are, but it's, you know, it's a state thing, so it's pretty easy to figure out. But I think we, Paces Foundation, we okayed down to 24 more affordable housing. They haven't started on that, I don't know why, but I think most of us would agree we need workforce housing, because most of those folks don't qualify for that. So I, that's what we're shooting for, something in the $200,000 range, if they get two bedrooms and two baths out of it. And so, but like David said, we, we got that property probably 20 years ago. And when I found out it was not in the city, I said, "Well, this is crazy. Our public works wasn't even in the city." So I asked you to put it in motion, that we need to annex it in the city. And then, you know, some of this other came about, about the density and the housing and all that. Of course, we're open to it, absolutely, but we don't have anything in the back room ready to go, and had to talk about it. We did, we do, we do a RFP to get everybody have a chance to own it.
And that's just one option, too, Rex. I mean, in my head, if they qualify for ship, they should qualify for a free piece of land. And that was kind of the direction that I'm trying to swing everybody to, is let's get the land, put it in a trust, build some roads, put the pipe down, and if you qualify for ship, if you guys want to give them 43,000 or 15 for a down payment, we'll give them a piece of land. We have to tie that qualification to some program that already exists. So I think that'd be a cool partnership, and maybe release some of the restrictions of what can be put there. Know what I mean? So if you're gonna give 43, and they can get a tiny home for 100, you know, that helps. We just have to loosen our restrictions on our end, too, because in R1, you gotta build 1,200 square foot, 1,200 square foot house. 1,200 square foot stick built, 200 bucks a foot, that's 240,000 without the cost of land. So our minimum house in town is already exceeded what we call affordable.
If he put 43, he'll run out of it through some, I was thinking by, what's the date on the money?
We don't pay anything fast yet.
No, no, he's not shipping, they sent 43,000, so I'm assuming they're talking about HTR3. That's what we paid for. We paid for all those trailers that came from you.
On the very low? Yes, sir. That's where we're at about that subject.
And again, the number, I'm just looking for a program to tie it to, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If you would qualify for a certain program that would get you funding, then you would qualify for all programs as well. And I think that's a great way for us to have a relationship, a little symbiotic, you guys find the grant programs for funding, and we'll provide the land and the infrastructure. To me, that's the simplest way to get somebody in there.
Pretty good partnership.
Let me ask you a question, so. You're looking at, baby? I'm kind of in the background seeing trailer, mobile homes, modular homes, or...
You know, and I hate the stigma, and I'm not, you know, ever gonna just say, "Hey, we need to build a trailer park." What I think we need to do is get creative, get more, get less restrictive, maybe by size. You know, right now, like I said, the minimum requirement is 1,200 square feet. Maybe in that neighborhood, we allow houses as small as 800 square feet. You know, modulators, it doesn't have to be a trailer, but I don't want to be that restrictive, because I know that a lot of our workforce, you know, can only afford certain things.
Let me ask you another question. There's no power in there, there's no sewer in there, there's no water in there, and the only, my knowledge, the only...
No road.
That's it. That's right, no road. You'd have to go to where your work building is, and probably, I would say, to me, to the south there, and try to eliminate some of there to get into it. And you gotta go across a lot of, just looking at the, about, about all that whip.
There's a lot of hurdles, and I think a lot of it's gonna be government appropriations and just begging the state, you know, for help. That infrastructure alone is gonna be millions of dollars, I mean, running pipe and the roads back there. So it's not a overnight fix, but I think it's something that we need to work towards.
The road is going into public works, is bad. Dump right out on the garrison, you're talking 375 units in one and 200 in the other, that's 575. That's gonna be, that front count's gonna be way up there.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be a lot of people, one way in, one way out.
We got some other options for that, coming off of 71. Maybe going behind, was it Courthouse, or was it coming off Knolls? Well, it was, I mean, you could come off Knolls, you wouldn't have to go straight to Garrison. If we did go in on 10th Street, Patrick, and go around the Duke Energy place, we'd have to get some permission from them to do that. So everybody wouldn't dump on Garrison, someone would go on Knolls, but there's also some other options, but this is getting way, way, way ahead of the game, for sure.
And that's just one guy's idea, so I need a lot more people to sing the same song before it happens.
It'd be real life, I think, and good, high, dry ground. That is, is gonna sink the ground for the next hour of the year, just... Well, there are some good high ground that we can utilize, and so that's, even in half of it, more than that 29 acres, that's a pretty good chunk of property. Even if we use 20 at 15 acres, that's 300, 300 homes we need. Of course, they won't all get built at the same time, but...
Yeah, and I don't think we could absorb that many homes today. You know, it might be 20, 30 a year, just having the opportunity to do that is what's important, you know? It phases.
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
One thing that I'd like to bring up is, it seems like there was a consensus and an agreement after the COVID pandemic. One of the things the community needed the most was a place where people live. And this is far from the best idea, the greatest idea, but things get better when you spend time and point out, like what Ward just brought up, talk about roads, and it may turn out it's not even feasible. So instead of getting bogged down in the details of something that may never develop, I think we just have to be more open to the idea. The first step is to annex the property into the city. We're gonna have a project that's gonna be in the city. And that's as far as we have really gone. I can assure you that I will be a no vote if a road has to go and cause problems, because we learned that from the Pace Foundation. There's a lot of people that benefit from that housing right now. I have friends living there today. And the one issue that always comes back up, and it's been a black eye on that project from day one, is the road. And we're trying to actually solve that problem before they start on Phase Two. We're gonna redirect traffic and do some different things that'll help, but it won't be perfect even then. But I learned a lesson from watching that project develop, that that road should have never been there. So I'm not gonna be a part of a project in the future where the people start saying, "Well, you had a good idea, but you made my neighborhood miserable, because you brought 600 cars a day every morning in and out of it." So that's not gonna happen. I think it is feasible to run the, run parallel to the railroad tracks, and you can come out there. I probably know that property better than anybody in here besides two other guys, because I have the lease right beside it, and I spend a lot of time out there. There is a ridge out there that would accommodate whatever. I'm not gonna support a trailer complex, I'll tell you that now, mobile homes. But I think it could be done if it turns out to be cost-effective. It may be that the road and running power that's over out there just precludes it from ever happening. But I saw the Pace Foundation project, after a couple of years probably of hurdles, they now have a building out there, about to build another one, and it'll benefit people. So we're way ahead of figuring out ways to tear down an idea. It's easy to do that, but I think we should just focus on, first, we gotta annex the property, we're going into that direction, and then we'll decide. The one other thing I wanted to ask Chairman Quinn was, the mayor had asked if we reversed the two properties, and we focused on a sports complex at the end of the 10th Street, what we're talking about now, and we did look at developing the Field of Dreams. Is the county still gonna be pushing to have the reduced density in that parcel, or are you gonna pick where the density applies and changes based on where the lot is?
Isn't that already in the city?
Which it is.
Yeah. So that would fall upon our...
So you would have no concern with the density out there?
It's all in the law. Yeah. It falls upon our... Well, I think, because in my view on this density deal, it kind of, that just happened in Highland View, it's happened right now in Butler's, Butler Project, too. You know, it's, of all four, you know, powers, I think we need bad, and I definitely need people, you know, and need decent places to live. I think we need to be careful about our future, in the city and county, on density, because I mean, we can just look west of here and figure out what not to do. You know, we got, you know, it's not real hard, you know, just have a controlled, you know, steady, vibrant area. That's why people come here, you know? It's a great place to live, and most places are not living on top of other people. I think that's, you know, I can bite my ear, you know, density, that's, you know, Highland View, yes, on this, you know, the Butler project, you know, condo, hotel, restaurant, office space, and you know, if that was still the county, they gave to y'all 15 years ago, we still retain it. The road, you know, that density would be much lower, and the people around it would be much happier with it. You know, that's a lot to put in a very, very small area. And they're not 100% maximizing off of density, they want, they want to, you know, as a developer, I mean, it's their right in that area, you know, because it's already been passed and settled. It was 15 years ago? So that's my, you know, on the density, just, you know, control and, you know, 70, 375 units is just a lot at the 15 units per acre. And you could probably, in being there, I think you're gonna get at least 25, 30 acres of usable land. I mean, I'm not, I'm, you know, an engineer, but I think you're gonna get a good chunk of land. But I, you know, just concerns on the roads, you know, just, I think the place we fill the drains, you've already got your power, your water, and your roads right there, dump right out onto 98, you know, as far as a viable place. You know, that might be another solution, but also, Mr. Hoffin said, I agree, and I know this is just step one, but, you know, we gotta look down the road to the future, too. And, I mean, people, you know, developers will come in and ask for this stuff, if they even get it, and the developer's gonna leave, we're gonna be stuck in whatever, you know, they do, whatever they bring to us.
Well, Patrick, that's my fear. We have two pieces of land here, Mark, that we could use for housing, and that's it. We're out, we're landlocked here. If Mormons don't own it, St. Joe does, so we really can't go out. Windmark and Jones Home says it's about our last options for residences. So just, we do have to do these two right. That's all we got left, it's the last chance we can do with the density. Because we've got a partnership with St. Joe, we're doing it on 71, 80 years, that's four years per acre. So, I mean, it's doable. I know what a developer's gonna wanna do is just do as much as you can on that particular piece, probably can't follow it, and that's as good as it is.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Anybody? Anything coming? Sandy, you got something else? All right. Okay. All right. Let's go somewhere.
Mayor, I'd just, I'd like to say, I know that we're asking for R3, and this is only me speaking, I don't need 300 apartment units, I don't think, if that even comes down the pipe. I don't believe stick building anything is gonna get someone in there for under $1,000 a night, or $1,000 a month. That number, I'm willing to negotiate down on that number, I don't know about the rest of the board, but it's good to start high and then cut it down. I don't want to kill myself and take all my options off the table right at the start. I'd rather work down from here, if you can.
Yeah, and I said, right off the bat, that could change, so. So I'm waiting, hear about the D E O and see what, if they're okay with what we got, and we talk about it more, we'll talk about some, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner's Delany, and I know you only have about half our election, the clock's ticking on this issue. I think more importantly, the clock's ticking on the county commission. They brought it up in several public meetings. We've had private meetings with the administrator, individuals, commissioners, and it can go around the room, we can discuss it, but ultimately, the county has to make a decision. I understand the D E O's review, and I understand you've all passed the ordinance, I understand you've gone through your requirements under the statute. County reserves that ability, and they challenge it through a deck action. That has a certain amount of time under the statutory guidelines as well. The county commission has a finite amount of time, where they can discuss it, make an action, and go to court on it. And I do not think in my private discussions, which I've been authorized to say, that nobody on the county commission, I think, wants to go to court to try to stop the city from doing that. But the commissioners asked for this point, which was, there's room for discussion. I think the discussions between, as I understood, the mayor and chairman were that they were gonna try to find some middle ground that worked for both the county and the city. The project that Commissioner Farrell referred to from 15 years ago was, annex it, wait, see, 15 years later, nobody in this room was here at that time, didn't have control of the issue, but now the county's dealing with it, having hours of public hearings with this realm of public, and the city has the issue with regards to the density. So it's another, in the same issue you all said a couple minutes ago, is this issue could go on for a couple of years, there couldn't be answers, there are a lot of things that are unresolved. So there's a lot of answers that haven't been provided to the county commissioners, that they're being challenged to make a decision based on a wait-and-see approach. Commissioner, you made a point earlier when you said that there's a lot of things that would need to be changed from an R4 or an R1, but then a couple minutes later, you also mentioned that you have to go back and reduce the 1,200 to lower. So there's gonna be revisions made within the city to accommodate this project. It is a long-term plan, but the county commission doesn't have months or years in which they can sit back and wait and then see, and they spy, or your vibe may not be there when this project ultimately comes to fruition. So that's why I would say time is of the essence on this discussion. I understand you only have an hour to discuss it today, but the county commission has to make a decision. It's public knowledge and it's information on the public notice of that. There's an agenda item at 5:30 today with the county commissioners that say city annexation. And a year and a half ago, I came before you all, there's a lot of folks here from the Highland View neighborhood, you all evaluated this decision, and that was a contentious issue between the city and the county at times, also with regards to density. It's come up again, and so my job, obviously, is to take direction from the county commission and do what they direct me to do, but I would ask that if the county commission and the city, if there is some kind of middle ground, that that is explored before the county's window, in which to legally challenge and seek a declarative judgment against the city to stop the annexation, and not getting into the merits of the legality of it all, but assuming the county has a decision to make, and they've had people come to their meetings for hours on end the last two months, discussing about density issues. So it is front and center for the county commissioners, and it's gonna come up again an hour from now. So before you move on to the next topic, I know that they're gonna bring it up an hour from now, so if there's anything else that could be discussed between the city and the county, I'd certainly encourage it, or they're back into a corner.
Jeremy, I think the big issue really boils down to trust, and I know that you guys feel like, you know, you can't trust us, there's been things, you know, the flip side there. I think trust is the big issue, and I can't really say, "Hey, trust us on this one," because y'all didn't like the outcome of the Highland View decision. But I mean, that's what it really comes down to. If we're gonna try to keep rolling this ball forward, we're gonna do what's in the best interests of the citizens of St. Joe, and I would hope that coincides with what's in the best interest of the whole county, citizens that y'all represent as well. But if it comes down to trust, and it's really just a, I don't know what the answer is, Jeremy. I don't foresee our board backing down from what we've already proposed, but what I'm saying is, we don't, we can't have discussions, because we don't know what it's gonna turn out to be. We haven't gone out for an RFP, I don't know. We don't know any more than you guys know at this point.
All we did was annex property, okay? And then all this crazy density thing came up. We had no plans whatsoever to develop that property. That's what I can't, you know, figure out. Would we may do it a year from now? We might, but, but right now, we've got an annex, we did everything that was required by law to get it, it was approved, all the notices were sent, everything was done by the book, and that's all we're saying. We're simply asking you guys not to protest an annexation that's not only gonna help us, but, like I said before, when Jeremy appeared for us, for our success is your success. So it just, I don't know if we can sit here and say, "Okay, we'll agree to five an acre." We're, we're, because we're not, all we're saying is, we've been annexing... annexed, get a story.
You're at fifteen, we're at fourteen.
Huh?
Y'all are at fifteen on that property.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. Well, the biggest density, you're at fifteen.
That's right.
Are you, are you there, you're not gonna, that's where you're at?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm willing to find some medium ground, um, just because we may not find any kind of developer that may even wanna do anything out there because of infrastructure stuff, so.
I'd be fine finding some medium ground.
What's the low zone we can have that would allow apartments?
Well, you gotta keep in mind, we have zoning. R one has certain regulations, R two is multifamily, and R three, and then with those, reduce the size of your house down like you was applying to. When you get into R two and R three, you don't have to have as large a house, so that was why y'all looked at the R three.
I was gonna ask you about R two B, could you do a, an apartment-style building in an R two B?
You have to look at the land regulation, see what you wanna do, but without an R F Q to go out there to see what's available, at this point, they've only taken step one. That's just to try to, try to bring the property in where they got the option to do something. The next step would be, in my mind, would be to do an R F Q, to sit down to, there may be ideas that none of us in this room ever thought about, guys, I don't know what, what we need as far as housing on there that we can afford, the infrastructure, all those things coming into play, but this, they've only taken step one. Step two, in my mind, would be for these guys to direct us to go out for an R F Q and just interview these people like you're doing for a job interview and see what they wanna do, and at that point, then they may come back and say, we only want forty apartments or forty single-family homes, but they haven't gotten that far yet. This is just step one.
I guess, too, Jim, like, going back to what Jeremy said, circle back, it's probably down to Butler, the property by Butler Bay, is, that property's sitting there for what, ten, fifteen years?
At least.
No development, but it, it'd only been changed over, but now we're, we're stuck with that, and we're hearing about it every meeting, you know? People are not happy, I mean, it's already annexed, there's nothing we can do, but, and, and that's our contention on, you know, if we agree to fifteen, you know, it's gotta be some middle ground, you know, basically just.
There may not be any middle ground in our L D R right now, what we're saying.
R three was, R three was the least. Rex, you know, you changed Christmas to three votes.
Yeah, but it does take time, it'll be, it'll take more time than tonight, you know what I'm saying? And I understand that you guys need a, need something like right now.
Mayor, if I can, just say your point. I've heard from the commissioners up there, and the one thing I just wanted to emphasize is, everyone I think is likely agreeing is, it's gonna take a lot of time, a lot of planning, a lot of different agencies, both state and local. So this is a multi-year plan, you're talking about traffic studies, you're talking about upwards of five hundred-plus units, this is a long-term plan, but the very first thing that the city's doing that the county has to evaluate, you said trust, and I've heard from the commissioners individually, I don't think any of them question trust, they just can't predict the future, whether they're gonna be here or you all are gonna be sitting here a couple of years from now. So before they get to the point where they stand down, which they've all discussed openly in public meetings, is that not a matter of trust, but do they have all the answers that they feel comfortable that it's been within confines of what they think is appropriate in terms of density? And the first thing that happens is the annexation, versus getting all the answers where they know that they don't need to challenge an annexation. So, that window's closing within the weeks ahead, and we're talking about multi-year plans, so I've heard the commissioners, and I don't think it's an issue of trust, and I've heard you mention that, it's just more of the urgency and the cart before the horse. So, the county has an obligation to evaluate it, and they're gonna vote on it, and that's within the next two weeks versus a multi-year plan with all these different funding agencies and plans and traffic studies and infrastructure and roads and so many other things that can be answered in the months to come. So, I believe that's part of the discussion that's gonna come up from me and the administrator in an hour from now, and I would just ask the city if there was anything that they could do to somehow pop those brakes, to give the county the opportunity to work with them to evaluate this annexation versus adopting an ordinance, sending it to D E O and closing it down to thirty days, which the county, because once this train's left the station, I will say a year, there's nothing the county can do once it's gone. And that happened with Butler Bay Road, it's happened with other annexations, and the county has, is forced now into a position where they need to make a decision without all the answers on the table. That's how it's offered to you, Mr. Mayor.
Clint, you wanna respond to that, as far as what, everything's been done, uh?
The property has been annexed, I, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to figure out what it is that you guys want at this particular moment. The property has been annexed.
And, and, and all the information been sent to D E O?
It has been sent to D E O.
So that, that's, that's in the state's hands right now. Now, I don't know if you guys want us to say, all right, we'll agree to ten an acre, well, I don't know if we have a, have anything that, on the books right now that would allow us to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, in respect, they said the council, you adopted an ordinance to adopt an annexation, you had a second reading, correct, I had the first one?
No, it's been, it's done.
And after you adopt an ordinance at municipality or county level, there's a period in which it's sent up to the state that's also open to appeal and challenge that, correct?
Yes.
So, that's where we're at right now, which is, you've adopted an ordinance, which is all intents and purposes of law, you've annexed the property, gone through all your steps, and now the public, voluntary and involuntary, where the county has that window time in which they can challenge it.
Correct.
Not speaking to the merits of the legality of it, which is simply saying whether the county has to sit there and challenge the merits of that argument, that annexation, and all the other things that come underneath that statute. So, I understand the city has done what it needed to do, it had a first reading, it had a second reading, and adopted an ordinance, just like the county adopted.
What are you asking us to do now? That, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I'm not asking anything, Clint, I'm saying, the commission has discussed it, I think the chairman has met with the mayor and the manager, and I think there's been discussions where they've all expressed that they'd like to find some modicum of compromise in the density, and it's not forty, and it's not fifteen, and I think that the request was that they would, the city and the county would have the same density requirements, and I've heard from everyone in here saying that there's room for discussion.
But I think there's two differences, you have the annexation, and then you have the large, um, land change, the zoning change. We've annexed the property, and you can challenge that, but I, I don't think they're gonna back down from the annexation aspect of it, I, I don't believe so. And, we, we haven't adopted the land, I mean, we've adopted the land, um, large-scale plan amendment, but we haven't gotten approval yet, so I think there is still time to discuss all those aspects, but the annexation is in the works, I mean, it's been adopted.
So, so, let's, let's, let's back up a little bit then, if we wanna talk about compromise, uh, you guys have a right to, to propose annexation, and we, we understand that, but, but if you don't, then we come back and we talk about what we've just got through talking about, about the density. And I think. And that's something that we have time to do, and we're, we're not put on the spot to make the change right here, right now.
We already agreed that the zoning that currently exists won't really suit us, none of ours, R one through four wouldn't really suit us as far as the size of the houses that we might allow, R two B possibly, but I was told you need to look at the L D R for that. I think that I'd like to see more workshops as the time goes forward and design together, you know, what zoning requirements should be in this special district.
Excellent.
And to me, that's the compromise that, we're gonna annex the property, I don't think that's gonna change, but what we do need to discuss is, what's appropriate, and I think the only way to do that moving forward is to sit down as a group and say, here's the project, you know, we've had some R F Qs come in, this is their proposal, and then we can start calling back the number of units.
Jeremy, what are you asking me to do, sir, back? I know what you're saying, I'm trying. Once we annex, and we're gonna test, there's no leverage anymore. Once we let it go.
Sir, there's Clint's point, there's two different cities, issues, one is the density and the other one's the annexation, but as they're discussing right now, there's a negotiating that happened in the future about density and, and compromises, they brought up the field of dreams, are there? If it's in the city, it's the city's density requirement, so nothing the county can interpret. So, so this county commission can offer your input, and they can take it into consideration, there's nothing there, it's all within the municipality, so there's no jurisdiction that the county has, so this density requirement can be a very positive discussion in the future, but there's nothing the county has.
Right.
So, the reason the annexation issues come up is because you're annexing county property into the city, and it's the only time that the county actually has a voice in this discussion.
And that's where the trust comes in, that we will further these discussions as we go forward.
I mean, we're, we're gonna be here three hours, but you're two more years for sure, and, and, uh, two, we've still got another year, we've got plenty of time, guys. All right, if we're gonna work together, we need to work together, and this is the way we can do that. And so, I mean, you don't, you don't always have to have a leverage on everything, okay? You could just talk back and forth and say, now, we, none of us were here, I don't try to live in the past, we, we learn from it, that's what y'all are trying to do with the, with the intent of property, I understand all that, but, it's different time, different group, different day, so, I, uh, personally, I think just let it move forward, and let's, let's, let's work together, the, after it's done, we call a meeting anytime, and, uh, and start and talk about how we can make that a special district, that would be, you know, a thousand square foot homes and only extra number per acre, all those, I think we're all open to that.
Well, I'm definitely open to negotiating density.
Yeah.
But not being held hostage on an annexation. That ain't, that's not the way I'm gonna do it. Uh, if, if the county objects to the city annexing their own property, some of they own since, what, the late seventies, early eighties, then I, I would just say that you have to do what you gotta do, but I'm not gonna sign off on density, and, and because that really has nothing to do with the annexation. And, and I get what the attorney is saying, this is your only time you can do that. I'm at the point now, because this is the second time we've had this contention, file the lawsuit, let's let it run through the courts, and we'll decide how it works, but aside from that, I, I'm, I will definitely work and negotiate what we think is best for the community, where would be the road to come and go, and how many apartments or townhouses or single-family units would be out there. Like I said a minute ago, we learned a lesson at the first attempt at this, and it ended up being a good project with flaws, and I think we can go about it on the second round and make things better, but as far as the annexation, I'm gonna be firm on that as we move forward.
How you guys feel about coming back and just talking about density? Sitting here face to face and getting recorded, we, we all agreed that we would, uh, we would come back and talk about, and Dave had a, a good point, we'd make a, you know, make that property a special type district, and inside that district would be all those footnotes about size and density. Y'all are okay with that, we'll, we can move on to, to something else. I will throw something out, uh, that, uh, I've instructed, uh, our staff to start looking at the Field of Dreams again for a, for a, uh, ball fields, uh, Tenth Street, uh, back nineteen fifty-eight, had two fields there, now there's three regular fields, a tee-ball field and three softball fields across the street. It's a dangerous place right now, I'm, I'm a little, um, afraid that somebody can get hurt running between those cars, there's no parking, it's just outlandish, it's useless, and our, our city and citizens, our kids, grandkids deserve a whole lot more than, than what we're giving them, and, uh, I've asked, asked them if we can start small, we can do million roads, million parking lot, just build fields and concessions down and bathrooms, and then work off of that and make it better. So, uh, uh, I've asked them to look into that, I mean, it's already been engineered years ago, that's all in place, the architectural design is there, all that can be tweaked a little bit, but, but, uh, we're, uh, we need, we need, if anybody was down at the day of baseball, it, it was, it was shocking, the pictures I got of the cars and all over people's yards and up and down the street, and it's just, uh, it's not, it's not a good place, the ball fields anymore. I, I know a lot of people hang on to the past there, and that's not, no problem, uh, we need, I, I played ball there when I was eight, so I know, that's been a long time that it's been there. We have infrastructure problems under the fields that are, that need work now, stormwater pipes, and, uh, so, anyway, that's, uh, wanted to let you guys know that, uh, that I'm trying to move that back a little bit, not on the front burner, but getting close up there.
I, I want to come in on that real quick, Mayor, um, uh, I was wondering, I'm wrong to say, you don't think it's a good place for baseball right now? It's on running course.
No, I'm just saying, it, it's fine with baseball now, but it, but it's, it's running course for, it's outlandish, it's useless, because it's got, it's grown too much, and I'm not worried about lawsuits of people that live around there, I'm just saying, let's face reality, it's, it's, we, we need, we need better than that.
Right, yeah, I, I understand, but, so, so you moving out the Field of Dreams, and I'm, and I'm fine with moving out the Field of Dreams, but Tenth Street, man, has, they made a lot to a lot of people in the community, uh, that part, especially, there's a lot of kids that live on my side of town, they can get there and they can get home, uh, easily, uh, but let's get back to Tenth Street, because I was down there day of baseball, and I'm down there two or three times a week, and, I don't, I, I want to ask you, how long do you guys think, if we do go to Field of Dreams, how long pop off in that project?
We got to put some money together and see, that's the main thing. I'd like to see, I, I got two more years, I'd like to see it come inside of that, and I'm gonna push for it, I'm gonna push hard now. Now, Sandy, I, I know there are a lot of kids around, and I'm believing like one field down there for the neighborhood kids to go play, pick up ball is more fun than, than the organized ball all day long, but, let's face it, ninety-five percent of the kids come in a car with their parents or a neighbor or something like that, very few of them, they can't ride a bike, carry that big backpack, two bats and dozen balls and gloves and everything in there. And while we're on that, I'd be willing to bet that more people live outside the city use that than inside the city. So, you know, that being said, we've always said we'd love to have cooperation from the county to build a nice complex, because I've let your colleague, T L Jameson, and, uh, we walk, uh, I mean, we just, we, we can do better than what we got.
We definitely need a complex, yeah, but, but, but just to stay on Tenth Street, because we gotta, I mean, we need to do some, two years from now, okay, right now, we need to do something right now, and, and what I'm, what I'm saying is, I mean, I'm down there three times a week, and, and sometimes I'm, I'm, I'm being honest, I'm embarrassed, when I walk around and see our kids and those, those dugouts, I'm, I'm embarrassed, I'm like, and I don't understand why, and I said this, and I, and I've come to this to the other commissioner, if I was a parent, I'd have been, I've been blowing y'all's knees up, because it's embarrassing, I mean, we should do something, those kids deserve that, in this community, there's no way they should be inside a, a wired fence, they should be inside a, a nice dugout where they can sit down and enjoy the game, because that's what they're there for, but, I mean, we gotta, I mean, some of the dugouts don't even have tops on, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed when people walking around, walking around, uh, around the park, I mean, it's, so we need to do something, we gonna, we wanna move Field of Dreams, we'll move Field of Dreams, but we need to do something at Tenth Street now, I mean, ball, I, I get five thousand dollars for my park fund, I wouldn't donate my five thousand dollars to build, if I only build one dugout, that's one dugout, I got two more years, I'll build five, I'll build one dugout this year, I'll build one dugout next year, but we got to do something now, dugout-wise, for our kids, bathroom-wise for our kids, because, like I say, you, you all got, you go down, go down there, go down there on a Monday, go down, go down there right now when it's over, and there's no way we should have a tarp on top of the roof, there's no way a dugout should be leaning, yeah, come on, guys.
Let me jump in here, Mr. Chairman. I'm back coaching baseball after ten years, I started over.
Congratulations.
But anyway, so, me and Jim was down there, day of baseball, we had to put a tarp on the dugout.
Not surprised.
And, and, I mean, you know, we beat that horse to death, I'm not gonna sit here and tell y'all, that's y'all's park, y'all gotta make a decision what to do ultimately, and Field of Dreams is y'all's, but, at the end of the day, uh, Chairman said, we, we need to do something, we've always said that we're gonna build a complex, build a complex, and every game, every day, we're right back where we left, and I agree, Mayor, that, you know, it is congested down there, there's no doubt about it, I worry about kids every, every time I'm down there, walking behind, talking, no doubt about it, but, uh, we can do better, and I'm saying that from, from a parent's standpoint, I, I'm down there coaching, I'm down there, Sandy see, I see Sandy, and I'm down there two or three times a week myself. two or three times a week myself, and, and I just think that in the meantime, and I'll, I'll do the same thing Sandy said, I'll be willing to put up my five thousand dollars.
We, to fill five or six years ago, kind of flies, but I'm just going to say five or six years ago, we had a committee, we had a commitment from the county for eight hundred thousand dollars, we were going to match that, and we were going to build a nice complex. And then, I don't know what happened to that, so where did we go?
Well, I'm going to be honest, Mayor, and I'm going to be honest, and I think Sandy was right with me. I was wholeheartedly in, and, and, and our whole, my whole outlook for the whole bill was to put that money in that park. We had, I, I mean, it, I played ball there, my, my son played ball there, I got a son playing ball there now. And it, at the end of the day, we just need to put our differences aside on this and do it for kids.
Work, work together, we did.
Yeah. And I know what you're saying, you know, we, we ran into a roadblock, and we know all about that, I'm not calling any names.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, uh...
I mean, I'm, I'm with both y'all on that, and I know, Mayor, I support your project, Field of Dreams, but I think realistically, for two hundred thousand dollars, we can turn 10th Street park, not change it, just fix what we got, you know, and reserve the right to build a complex later, but if we just keep hanging our hat on we're going to get this grandiose facility, that's going to be years.
And David, and, and just to add, you know, realistically, you're looking at an amount of five million dollars. I, I mean, if you're going to the Field of Dreams, the money's not in there. It ain't about putting clay down and installing fence, it's about running that infrastructure for the power and the water.
Point made.
You know what, Clay, that's, that's...
Two hundred fifty thousand of a year, or just max.
Yeah, but realistically, you know, we're, I mean, if y'all produce something, 10th Street, let's make it better, right now, I'm all in.
Well, right now, we got ten thousand dollars pledged, I just want to see if anybody else gives their money. But I, I appreciate that, especially coming from the, the two commissioners that live in, in the city and use the fields. And I agree with you, the ball fields are in a mess. And I'm going to leave that subject where it is. I think we'll, we'll work on getting it better, but it, it brings up another spot that, if I can, I'll just go ahead and go, the other item that I wanted to speak of real quick. The other spot in the city of Fort St. that needs some attention is the Washington Gym. The bathrooms at the Washington Gym are the worst in the county, I would think, and it's terrible. Now, we talked about it and, and multiple times, and, and, and maybe I misheard what, what the deal was, but in my mind, the county had pledged seventy-five thousand dollars, and the city would match the seventy-five for a total of a hundred and fifty. We've got a rough drawing, we're ready to start digging dirt, and then I found out, no, that's not really what the county promised, they promised to go out for some grant. So I'd like to update on this grant, and I'd like to actually formally ask you, as the commissioner, to pledge irregardless of the grant. We, we actually voted to ask for funding on the legislative side this year, but I made the motion to put that on the list with the understanding, if that pledge through the legislation does not come to pass, we're still going to build that bathroom. And if we have to build it our own, we're going to build the bathroom. It may mean that the dugouts still have tarp's on them, but the bathrooms, in, in my mind, are priority. So I'd like to update on where we are.
So Washington, I grew up in that gym, so that's been one of my top priorities. I don't know where the seventy-five, I, Bill, unless it's hard, Bill Kenny was alive, man, he mentioned fifty thousand, I thought, I don't know where the fifty thousand, I don't know where the seventy-five thousand come from. So I don't know where that number come from, but, but, but we give you up there on that side. The county did a grant for a grant of five hundred thousand, but we still waiting to hear back. So we hoping, and we believe, we hoping we going to get that, but if that doesn't happen, the county has, has another opportunity that, that I think the administrator, he brought to my attention last week, that's going to call up at our board meeting, and I'm going to apply for another, if I'm not mistaken, another five hundred thousand, another five hundred thousand, and that's coming from another, another source, which we probably, we can't discuss until we vote on it. But, so we got one five hundred thousand, we asking for CDBG, and then we going to ask for another five hundred thousand, so we hoping somewhere in that we can get enough money to help with Washington Revolution.
So if the grant doesn't produce the funds, the county's out?
No, the county won't be out, I'm pretty sure it will, which I'm finding.
I just think we, we've talked about that project long enough, and I think that if the city can afford it, the county definitely can afford to build it. And it may not cost the full hundred and fifty, it may be at a hundred thousand. I think you can afford it, and I think the community deserves it. And I, I just don't think the decision to build a bathroom should be based on, do you receive the funding for the CDBG grant?
We will look for, but the county has also, though, I mean, you own, you own, you guys own the park, but we have also contributed and helped out at that park, because I know since I've been a commissioner, I, I put in and repaid the whole track, that, that park, so, I mean, we, especially, I've been pushing, and it's something that I can do with, like, I put on, put over it all, all the time. So we, but we hoping that we can get this funding, and I'm pretty sure if we don't get the funding, the county won't, will never be out a facility that's beneficial to the community.
Yeah, it's kind of like when the county asked the city, what, a month ago, if we would only up fifteen thousand dollars each a third going to the senior building, we immediately found the money. We didn't say, well, we're going to apply for a grant and get back with you, because it's a, it's a building that the whole community uses, and that's the Washington Gym is, is an example of that as well.
All right, we're about, we're about on our hour, folks, and I think we had some good discussion here today. I think Sandy and I'll get together for the next meeting, and maybe from all these ideas that have thrown out, we can, we can have a more of a formal agenda. I hope today just do, just what we did, and maybe we can formulate an agenda for our next meeting, and between now and the next meeting, which is three months, three months, we can be actually working and talking about some of these things we brought up, and, and let's, let's keep working together, and, and if nothing else, we'll, Sandy, John.